Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Yes.
And Mr. Williams. Uh, Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Mr. Fricci.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Jordan here. Uh, Mr. Seymour and Mr. Driver are right here. So you'll have five members.
We have a few items on our agenda and then we have a call session of the library's uh, really, that the bond rates, uh, the library bond rates.
The president. I was, uh, who was it? Yeah, the president. The first item uh pertains to the uh-
I don't know much of this.
Southfield uh Library Building Authority. This item was discussed with the council and I believe back in May when we were talking about refinancing on the Michigan Transportation Fund, this item came up as well. The uh bonds originally, the call date on that is on May seventeen. The new bonds cannot be issued ninety days prior. But what we can do is lock in the bond rates. And in the last few weeks, bond rates have been very desirable. Uh, so after some discussion with Steve Frank, uh, our attorney, uh, with Miller Cantfield on this matter, and our city treasurer, and uh Dave Ewing, a few other members of the library board, we felt we needed to move this item out sooner so we could lock these rates in if we hit one of these sweet spots. So the action in front of you is asking that they adopt the attached resolution which-
It's way in, it's way in the back.
Way in the back, okay.
Way in the back.
And that resolution was prepared by uh Steve Frank and Miller Cantfield, who's with us this morning. Um, so they're asking that council authorize a resolution titled, uh, approving Southfield Library Building Authority refunding contract. That would allow the mayor, city clerk to sign that contract.
So we would also be asking for a rule ten on this one. Questions, Colonel?
Yeah.
No question?
How much is this bond for? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, put it deep.
How much we receive on three?
Over the course of the uh-
Three million.
The bond is designated based on the interest rates we've seen recently, over three million dollars.
Yeah, three point one.
Two million.
Three point two.
I'll support rule ten.
We don't know yet until we actually go out.
Well, by place of-
But they're, they're much lower than what we go.
We will call on this and know.
Are you done with your questions?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Fricci, supported by Mr. Moss for a rule ten. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion.
I move that this uh Southfield Library Building Authority uh finally financing take place sort of to the spot that we have October twenty ninth.
Motion by Mr. Fricci, supported by Mr. Fraser, to adopt the resolution for the Southfield Bond Refinancing. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion.
The president, our second item uh pertains to the appointment of the Library Building Authority. Well, it appears I did not uh ask for a rule ten in the write-up. In order to move this item forward, I would request that council uh approve this item if desired as uh on the rules of operating uh machines of council. The Library Building Authority has five members. Uh, we're asking just to confirm the appointment of four persons. That would be the city administrator, the city attorney, the city controller, and the acting director of public works and operations. This would allow the library board the authority to adopt the resolution they need to do uh act upon part of the bond uh financing. So the bonds are actually being issued by the Southfield uh Library Building Authority. The library board will also need to pass the resolution because they will be pledging their revenue stream to retire the debt. So council has the, uh, the action you've taken to authorize the contracts to be signed. And then we're cleaning up the appointments of the uh Southfield uh Building Authority.
Absolutely.
There will be one vacancy. Uh, we need to come back with you and a later date with that uh person or position.
Could you uh go over again, who is on the, the library board, or the library uh-
So when, when the LBA was originally form- formatted, formatted, and before the library was built, the council adopted a resolution, there were three members at that time. It was the city attorney, the director of fiscal services, and the director of public works. So person wise, it was Jack, Tom Bukinich, and Jeff Shrek. Those terms have expired. Um, subsequently, a few years after that, um, council decided to expand that board, and they went to five members. And at that time, Sam Havens was, was appointed, and another architect. His name right now is escaping me. So at one time, we had a five-member board, and all their terms were active, and they were meeting, and as the library was being built, they were overseeing that project. Those terms have all expired. And so there is a five, currently, your resolution establishes a five-member board, and what the action here would be at least to appoint four right now. Um, and then we need a fifth, we realize that, but it's at least to get this, this board back active so that they can adopt that same resolution that you adopted on the refinancing. Well, it, the, the proposal is the city administrator, the city attorney, the uh controller, Joe Pierce, and also picking up a public works person again, which was originally done, uh, picking up the acting director of our public works operations. So that would keep our public works- You know what? I'll figure it out.
Just to keep my jail.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But-
That's, that's, so the attorney, the um-
Administrator.
Mr. Pierce.
The controller, there's three, and then the acting-
Public work.
Public work, there's two more then. No, 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 there's, there'll be one vacancy. If council approves this item, there'll be one vacancy still on the board.
The building experience.
Well, I think, if, if I go back historically, I think that's why the director of public works was brought in, because he oversaw at that time facilities in the building department or had some involvement with building, um, because the library was being built. Obviously, at this juncture, the, the only function left of, really, of the LBA is to pay those bonds every year authorized to make sure the bonds get paid. So I'm not sure that you necessarily need the building component now because the library's built.
I was gonna say, I can push back on that, 'cause if the library needs any structural work done, that's where the-
Well, that's the library board. That's your library, charter library board that does that.
But if we're gonna do, pick the fifth person, even though the library board makes the decision that they're gonna do that, isn't it our responsibility to make sure that they have the right people on the building authority so that, I mean, we're a piece of it? Because you, as you said earlier, though, the library board has to also okay-
Right, because they have the care of custody of the library.
Yeah.
The library board, and, and they, if a repair is needed, they authorize it, they live within their budget. Initially, the LBA was to oversee the construction of the library. So now that that's occurred, the, really, the only remaining function is to make sure these bonds are paid.
But that fifth person may be of value to have someone with facility building, and we just need to name, but we're, I think we're more focused on getting to the resale of the bond. But we know we need the fifth, and we may come back and even tweak this composition because we do have about seven hundred-
I think there's less now.
Yeah.
A little bit left after all, after the library was built. And there were subpoenas by the library upfront. There is, uh, there may, there may be a half million dollars left. And so occasionally, that does become, that comes before the LBA to expend those funds. Those are not the library board's funds. Those are still within the purview of the LBA.
So until those funds are exhausted, you may want to have a board that composition.
He was, he was, but his term has expired as well. So if, if the council wanted that fifth lot to be an architect type, we could, we could certainly do that.
I, I just think that, that all the building, I mean, our building authority, you know, that, that was because of maybe that's the wrong way of that looking, and that's what we have two of them.
Oh, okay.
And we want to do their own. Anyways, uh, but our building authority can, uh, engineers, and builders, and contractors, and, and a lot of, uh, like Sam Havens, that reads plans, and, I mean, somebody's gotta monitor what's before you. So I'm not opposed to, to very being on that and get it moving, but I think that other one has to have some, I mean, I'd rather see somebody in the building department, you know, somebody that can understand the book.
And we could certainly move towards that. I think we, that's why we didn't name all five. Uh, we wanted to make sure we can get to a, a working quarrel and adopt the resolution necessary to get us into the bond sale stage.
And we thought that, that these, these individuals were kind of tracking what council initially put on the board, which was a finance person, uh, the attorney, and a, and a public works person. So we were kind of trying to be consistent with that initial focus of how-
The big one was Sam Havens, 'cause he was our, our building authority, and I looked him over.
Right, he could keep, he can-
On both, so because I thought that it was lacking, somebody who has the building experience.
Mr. Fraser, what have you done with your first?
Yeah, I'm, uh, in fact, I'll even move real quick.
Okay.
Are we going to appoint somebody with our potential-
Well, we can, we, I think we've heard council, so we will come back with a fifth.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Fricci, for a rule ten. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
Move that we approve the, the membership of the Library Building Authority as presented to us this morning.
That's his position, acting director of public works.
It'd be by name, not that by his department.
Well, no, what you did, what you positioned, you did it originally, you put position in. So we, again, tried to stay consistent with that. Of course, we have a, a, a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Seymour, for the library board. Any questions? Who's opposed? Oh, Joe Pierce. Oh, Pierce, down, oh my gosh. Uh, all, uh, any questions? All in favor?
Now, when you get sworn in, bring your families, we'll take pictures. Congratulations.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay, Mr. Payne. Do you want to do that, please? Okay, so, um, we, we had been, um, I think we had a discussion with you, the council president, that, uh, the November tenth, uh, committee of the whole meeting, currently scheduled for seven o'clock P M., um, we realized that presumably, all, if not most of the council would be here in the morning for the eleven, eleven o'clock Veterans Day ceremony. So there was a thought, do, to make it more convenient, more efficient, rather than have council have to come back at seven, was there any interest in moving up the council meeting that day till about one o'clock? So you'd be here for the Veterans Day ceremony, grab lunch or whatever, and then go right into the council meeting. So before you, if you propose a resolution, change the starting time of the November tenth meeting to one o'clock from seven o'clock.
Is that true?
It is, it is.
I, you know, for me, I, I'm probably, I'm not, I'm not gonna support this, but I'm sure I'll lose out on the vote, because it's not necessarily about what's convenient for our schedules, but it's convenient for the public as well. And I'm not advocating for certain members of the public, but, you know, it just, I, I don't, I don't find it to be, you know, in accordance with, uh, the reason that we have a city council to begin with, the open, and, and it's the middle of the day on a Monday, I just, I can't support it.
And we also take into consideration, you know, one of our colleagues, we have, we have a good time in the evening, everybody being there, even being a veteran. So we will entertain motion, as well. And we also take into consideration, you know, one of our colleagues, we have, we have a good time in the evening, everybody being there, even being a veteran. So we will entertain motion, as well. We have a motion by, did you make the motion, Mr.?
Yeah, yeah, rule, for a rule ten. See, we didn't have a rule ten.
Right, right, okay. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fricci, supported by Mr. Seymour, for a rule ten. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's three, four three.
Can you, um, do a, uh, six? Yes, to have the meeting start at one o'clock.
Is this the rule ten that you're still voting on?
No, oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
But it's a rule ten.
Right, it's a rule ten.
The rule ten.
Who's three?
Ken.
Okay, let's do a rule ten. Oh, a roll call.
Just before the roll comes in. Uh, I had not thought of it in that way. I was prepared to go with a, one of, one of, I mean, but Jeremy makes a, a good point. We're here to serve the public, not here to serve ourselves. And, uh, I understand the, the difficulty, but our meetings are normally at seven o'clock at night. Uh, and this, if we didn't have, uh, Veterans Day, we'd still have meetings at a clock at night. So, um, I don't think the veterans, uh, think changes, changes that issue.
Can I add one more point? I have no problem when we have emergent things we need to talk about, when we schedule, I, I've been flexible. There's, it's just a, kind of an arbitrary change that's already on a printed calendar, and I know, you know, that's been flexible throughout the years, so I just, I won't be able to support it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Skyler?
No.
Mr. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Mr. Williams? Uh, Mr. Fraser?
No.
Mr. Fricci?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Okay, four in favor, against the motion, yes. We will entertain motion, change the meeting.
I'll support the amendment to the council meeting schedule that it be, uh, set the time at, uh, one o'clock on Veterans Day.
We have a motion by Mr. Fricci, supported by Mr. Seymour, to adjust our starting time for the meeting.
And I'd like to say this, I'm agreeing with both Myron and Ken and Jeremy, I, I agree with them that we should be shifting things around, but I think because of the, because everything is referencing, it's, and there's other things going on in the afternoon and the weekend, so.
And if I may- I believe that we've got more than four hours with the business. And that was when this hit my desk last week, when Sue and I were talking, we're one o'clock, start at seven, we're at eleven, we've got a couple of tax, economic development initiatives, trying to get them compressed, but trying to also have a cow that, if we started at seven, what I originally saw was something that could be taking us to midnight. Uh, that was the other one, this, uh, when I saw the veterans thing, Sue and I had a conversation, could we, is it compromised to start earlier? Uh, and, and I'll tell you, maybe in the development of next year's schedule on our cows, in order to accommodate some of the economic development initiatives we have, I may recommend that we, you know, five o'clock start time so we're not here. So, you know, the business community thinks we're a little off, and we're here till midnight trying to do these things, so.
That's difficult with Mr. Fraser.
Uh, I, I hear what you're saying, and again, even if we go to midnight, uh, if we start, if we start, and the fact that we go to midnight really is a problem with this council, because we keep asking questions, and even after the questions are answered, it's, you know, trying to delay, or, uh, we go through a lot of, of what I consider fluff as far as conversation is concerned. If we, if we were real interested in getting the business done, we, we'd get the business done and go. But here, here, here again is the bottom line. We keep talking about, why don't we have more people that understand what's going on here? A sense of place. A sense of place also means that we're open so that the community can be, have input, can see what's going on. And we keep making it more difficult, rather than easier, for the, for the, the, uh, public to see what's going on. This is not a secret society. It ought to be completely open, and the transparency, but, uh, you know, and I can understand if we have, you know, if we're gonna combine a committee of the whole, you know, council meeting at the same evening. We've done it. We started at six o'clock and then gone up to the, to the, um, council meeting. And that's not that far off. But one o'clock in the afternoon, there are a whole lot of people watching, watch what we're doing, are still at work. And, uh, you know, we're making it convenient for ourselves. So the fact that we, we may have a four-hour schedule, a four-hour agenda, I still think we need to be open to the public, and that, the ones that are, the cities that are starting to flourish are those that do involve the community in a intricate way. And, uh, we just, we just gotta quit thinking old and start thinking new. So, that, I'm done.
This is a town meeting, I'm talking about, right?
Yes.
So, to me, I, I think it makes perfect sense. The meaning is that we don't want to change the ones that are, where we make the decisions, and the public, we have so few people ever come to the county, very few. We want to finish with a fair and rarely, rarely, we have, we had one staff in the county, and we have the same people come to the comments during the conference. So I don't, I, I just can't agree with my colleagues, but I think if we were doing this change to our regular meeting, then I would object, because that's established, people know it's a southern party, that's the worst, they come. Um, I, I think it makes sense, because we're dealing with a lot of issues, even with staff down, we have some that, you know, often be here until midnight, and they, they don't get anything back to us. Not that they should come first, and the public does come first, but I don't see that we're denying the public any option, so. The holiday people are, a lot of people are here for the ceremony, so, anyway, I support it.
Yeah, just, I already say, you know, if people on Veterans Day will have the day off anyway, it's like, it's not like you have to do that.
Not Veterans Day, it's Monday.
Yeah, I think celebrating, it's worth it, so, on Monday.
Tuesday's not a day that you take that's being celebrated.
Along with him, I don't know. But anyways, but what I was gonna say is, uh, you know, we really, uh, should have, let me say it, we actually should have at least one or two meetings a month that we just talk about getting reports from Terry and Sue and, and try out what's going on in the city. And I go back to, even yesterday morning, I hear that just their bank is leaving town going to One Woodward. And, and, and I guess if some of the things happening now, you know, with German company coming in, and this is for sale, and this is gone, and, and it doesn't seem like we're current with what's going on in the city, you know? Uh, and I can all hear from the police chief once in a while, how, you know, the statistics are coming off in the city, and it, just more communication back to council so that we're more aware of things that are going on. And, but yeah, years ago, we used to have Monday, Thursday, and once a month on Saturday. So we still have, I think, a lot of work to do. We've got twenty million dollars worth of, of road construction going on, and, and questions come up, and reports should be given on where it's at, and how it's going, and, you know, like the leakage at Eleven Mile Road, I mean, whatever is going on, well, we should be up to date, so that when people ask us, maybe they can answer. Maybe, that's just my opinion.
Well, I, I think this meeting is necessary to do the change, you know, based upon the, the agenda items, but, you know, making it, changing the meeting, I don't believe makes it difficult for the public to attend. Because there's, there's very few of the public attend our meetings, and we don't have a whole lot of people watching us, and when we're, because this is not a televised meeting anyway, so changing this meeting might, I think, do the business better. I think we've got to get out of the old mindset of, I think the meetings are easier to do, you have them, in my opinion, earlier in the day where you're fresh and you can make a decision, clear thinking, and we can invite more of the busy community to come during the working hour, so, it's a whole mindset we need to change. So we have a motion on the floor.
I gotta, I gotta make comment to that. The county board of commissioners meets during the day and has had numerous complaints about the fact that they've meeting during the day from the public, that they've actually shifted to night meetings to make them more accessible, more accountable, so I, I do disagree with that. I think the exact opposite. And I don't, I think Don hit the nail on the head. We need, we, we, we should be meeting more, we should be meeting more frequently, but I don't think that that necessarily means it has to be at one o'clock in the afternoon. Thursday night meetings, I think, are a great idea, uh, once in a while to check in on reports. But, you know, philosophically, our, you know, I do believe we're here to serve the public, and it's making us most accessible and transparent is not shifting a meeting to the middle of the day on a Monday, so. And I don't agree that that's the best practice. That's, that's true, and that's okay.
Like myself, I mean, I am busy during the day, and after the working hours, I guess, it doesn't matter, seven o'clock, the, with my business, and so, normally, it would have to move a lot of things around if you had to.
Yep, one last thing. And I, I agree with, uh, Don, and we should have more meetings, but we are planning them to be. And if, if, in the afternoon, uh, speaking to the council president, if we're more alert and, and up on it during the day, I don't have any problem with that either. But we ought to make that part of our annual schedule when we, when we put it together again. And these meetings are gonna be held in the afternoon so people, people know about it. I don't think this is the, the time to make that change. It's, it's kinda like, um, we're gonna have a party at our house, and the, the party's gonna be at seven o'clock. Everybody puts seven o'clock on the, on their calendar, their social calendar, and they show up at seven o'clock. Oh, I'm sorry, we had the party at one o'clock, seven.
And we voted on it earlier in the day.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, so I don't think this is the time to change it, because it's, it's, it protects, it protects the, the public, uh, expectations in, is it?
I don't see a problem. We're a public body, and when a, a meeting like this comes up, uh, it should come up at another time, we choose. So I, I don't think it is, is it, is the public meeting with us and knowing what's going on, how many people in the public here?
Because nine o'clock in the morning, well, so, and how many people attend your meetings, well, the same people.
I don't, I don't see any, any reason not to have another meeting. We, we, we can't plan it a, a year before.
Why not?
Impossible.
No.
You don't know what's gonna happen.
If we can plan it at seven o'clock, we can plan it at two o'clock, plan it at one o'clock.
They didn't, they didn't bring it up for, you know, a year ago or something. You don't know what's gonna happen.
No, you don't.
So this is-
But if we have a one-
It's nine o'clock. And talk about the commissions and papias. Well, how do you compare the commissions and papias with us?
It's a complete comparison.
It is, it's the same thing.
It's a body of government that's transparent and open.
So we transparent. Believe me, everybody knows what's happening, and more so. If I get called, a lot of people know more than I know.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Fricci, supported by Mr. Seymour, to change our starting time for the November tenth meeting to one o'clock. Yeah, do a roll call, will you? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Seymour?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cyrus?
No.
Mr. Moss? Mr. Frazier?
No.
Mr. Ficassi?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Okay, good. We'll move to the next item on our agenda and it's the Southfield Police Department's expenditure reimbursement.
Good news. Yes, it is. Good morning, council.
Right.
And I'm here this morning to, uh, to, to ask council to authorize a budget adjustment to move funds from one account to an expenditure account. Uh, but before I get to that, uh, Mr. Ficassi brought up something about, uh, statistics. And, um, I think this is a good time to talk about what we've done through our third quarter so far this year. And, um, uh, through third quarter compared to last year, our violent crimes are down twenty-three percent. Uh, we're doing something that we haven't done, uh, before in the police department. That's tracking our criminal activity on a quarterly basis as opposed to a yearly basis. And what this does is gives us an opportunity to make end-year adjustments. And it also allows us to project what may happen based on what's happened, uh, throughout the year. So, it gives us much more flexibility and versatility in terms of addressing things. And so, we're, we're seeing things, uh, uh, going down substantially, um, uh, with, with some of our end-year adjustments that we're making. We had a, we had a goal at the beginning of the year, um, to push down violent crime by twenty percent. And we're well on pace to do that. And so, um, and again, I, I talk to many council people when I'm out at functions and, and, you know, we're, um, over a seven-year period, uh, violent crimes have decreased by sixty-six percent in the city of Southfield. And moreover, we are one of the only communities in this area that have had seven consecutive years of decreases in violent crime. You know, everybody has gone down cumulatively, but we're the, the, one of the only ones who, every single year, over the last seven years, have had a decrease in violent crime. So, so there's some good news where, um, the FBI should be releasing the, um, official statistics sometime either, um, later this month or next month. And I am confident that we're gonna have, uh, an eight consecutive year of decreases in violent crime. So, things are, are looking good for it. So, I just thought I'd throw that out since, uh, Mr. Ficassi had, uh, talked about.
Yes, uh, I got a real estate meeting the other day and we have to look these stuff out. And primarily because Northland is up for sale and, and there's a lot of discussion in the ranks developers, what's happening with Northland. And each time that comes up, you know, Northland is full of crime. And so, if we could turn that around factually, uh, that would promote Northland and Southfield, but also get people interested in doing something with that shopping center. You sure don't want a bad shopping center closed up.
Absolutely. And, and what's great about this is that these are not statistics that we came over and that we're throwing out. I mean, these are, these are published by the FBI nationally. And so, this is something anybody can go on the website and look and see what the statistics are for the city of Southfield. And if, if we're to show-
I cannot mention Northland by per se, but can say Downtown Development Authority, it can, that whole area. You know, and make a press release on it for the whole city, but and name that particular area as being down if it's down. Because that's gonna have an impression on a lot of people who are out there doing this on Northland.
Just along that same, um, line of, uh, statements, in the next, um, month, we're gonna be presenting a company to council. We're in competition with Detroit, Austin, Texas, and Southfield. And I believe the trump card we played was the analytics on our crime stats. And they're now negotiating a lease for across the street. Uh, we're working through some, uh, steps with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. But the number was basically the crime in midtown Detroit was ten times greater than what we see here. And that was rolled out. I mean, obviously, you know, the discussion about Fifth Third, you know, we talk about free parking, no income tax, central location for your workforce. And the trump card is your employee, your employees are in a much safer environment. The Plant and Rand office, what they have in security in the Detroit office is amazing. Because you can walk in freely to their office here. And I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing, but their office in Detroit's like Fort Knox. I mean, so there are a lot of issues, you know, where we have very strong competitive advantage. The chief and his deputy, you know, I know the analytic details and some of the guys who said we've never done so much analysis of, you know, what's happening with our stats. But that's what drives us and allows us to, to craft, to draft and craft the appropriate response.
Well, we gotta keep coding that and we're not telling-
Our trumpeting would need to trumpet that message.
And, and, you know, cable has to get involved in these things. Might not do this move across in town seven. And you say, so it saves them forty dollars a month in, in, uh, in parking.
You had really cheap parking if you saved forty bucks.
Well, they're subsidizing it, you know? But, uh, still forty dollars a month, you know, forty dollars a month.
The average person in Detroit's paying one fifty to two hundred dollars a month in parking. And a lot of the landlords are subsidizing it.
I went to the west, uh, to, uh, Mary, I guess, it was eighteen dollars, which three hours.
For one day, three hours.
Yeah, uh, chief, you said our, uh, a lot of crimes have been down for the last seven years. Total crime has been, yeah, gone down. Um, I know crime has gone down across the country. Um, is it some, do you, uh, say that something that we have done has made the, the violent crime go down faster? What, what, you know, the violent crime is, a lot of times something went wrong. Uh, they went in to rob a store and, and, which I, I don't know if that's considered violent crime or not.
Yes, yes.
If they go in to rob a store?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and then the clerk does something and, and ends up getting shot. What do you, what is your program that says we can get ahead of that? In other words, why is our, why do you think our violent crime is down more than anyone else?
That's a great question. And to answer the first part of that question, yes, violent crime across the country has gone down, gone down dramatically. You look at a graph back, um, going back twenty years and, um, and you'll see it, uh, in the five years preceding that, it was going up. And then right at a certain point in the mid-nineties or so, it just started, it just dropped dramatically a- across the country. Now, and, and there's many theories to it. You know, there's, um, um, the fact, if you look at a similar graph, right, a graph right next to that, that shows the incarceration rate, that has gone up, uh, at, at about the same rate as an increase. So, some people attribute it to that. Uh, other people attribute it to the, um, the war on drugs. Drug, um, uh, drug-related crimes drove the violent crime rate for a lot of years in the early eighties and the mid-eighties. And then when we had this war on, on, on crime, on drugs, and started locking up a lot of these, uh, uh, folks who were engaged in these drug-related activities, um, they attributed that to, to, uh, contributed to this, um, this, this decrease. Others attributed it to, um, police-related, uh, activities. You know, the community, community, uh, policing. Community policing was something that came right in the, in the mid-eighties and, and mid, in, in, not, early nineties, right at the same time that we saw this drop across the country. So, all these things came together to, to kinda contribute as factors to the decrease in crime during this time. Now, what, now, there are some things that specific local agencies can do to accelerate that decrease. And one of the things we looked at and we started doing it is, uh, first of all, we, we have relationships with our, we, at all these colleges and universities in the city. We've established relationships with some of the criminologists in this city to help us out in identifying some of the root causes of, of crime and, and some ways of, of addressing it. One real good idea we got, uh, was from a professor at University of Detroit who, uh, who kinda gave us some advice about the predatory-type, um, individuals who come into a city. And you ask about robbing a bank. Those types of people who do, though, a lot of them who do, do those types of things are not from Southfield. They're from someplace else. They're not familiar with Southfield. They're not familiar with the routes leading out of the city. So, what can we do to, to, to kinda, uh, make it so it's not so inviting to, to those types of folks? They call scavengers. Is have an increased police presence in certain areas and traffic, traffic enforcement. A lot of times we think that, you know, when we increase our traffic units, that we're just trying to raise revenue or, you know, and things like that. No, increasing our traffic enforcement is an important crime, um, re- uh, reduction strategy. Because those scavengers see the increased police presence and they don't wanna come into a city when they see that. Because all they wanna do is pop in and pop out. And they don't wanna get stopped. A lot of them have bad plates, they, you know, it's things with their driver's license and stuff like that. And they don't wanna, they wanna go in it, it, with the, the least amount of resistance as possible, hit a party store and then leave. When they see the increased traffic presence and they know that there's an increased traffic presence, then they, this, this one kinda see this not so inviting. So, one of the things that, that we're doing with council's, uh, blessing on this and with city administrator is, uh, allowing me to, uh, to hire these additional officers. And, and I told council that I was committed to, once these officers got on board, to placing those, those officers into our traffic unit, or commit some of them, so that we can kinda boost up the, the, uh, the, uh, staffing in our traffic units to, to address partially some of those, those issues. So, so it's that, um, it's the, uh, community policing type things that, that we're doing. You know, there, we have more eyes and ears now in, in the city because of, uh, you know, our citizens' police academy, our youth police academies, but, you know, we, we still have officers in the school. You know, I talk to chiefs, um, you know, when we go to our meetings, and over the last five years, everybody has had a reduction in, in officers in their police departments. Everybody, substantial reductions. And so, what a lot of the chiefs were doing, were pulling those officers out of the schools, taking them from community, uh, as community policing officers, taking them back, bringing them back and putting them on, on the road and, and things like that. But, you know, those, those officers, even when you have a reduction in staff, keeping those officers out there can help you push down your crime rate. Because they solve problems before they become law enforcement issues. There's, there's a whole lot of things, there's more things that, that, uh, we're looking at doing, um, as we get these officers in staff. I wanna fully staff my traffic unit. Um, I, you know, we, we maintain, we have added officers to the schools instead of take, instead of taking them out. So, so there's a lot of things that, that we're doing to, uh, to accelerate this decrease.
Uh, Mr. May.
Uh, yeah, I have a question. You said that incarceration is going up and crime is going down. How do you manage that?
Well, some people attribute the decrease in crime across the country to the increase in incarceration rates, which have increased almost the, the exact same rate as, as an increase as our decrease has been in crime. So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a theory out there. Um, you know, you lock up more people, you get more of the bad people off the street and, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of the people who commit the crimes, you know, they do it over and over again. So, the theory is you can get those folks off the street and, and they don't have the, the opportunity to, to commit these crimes and you can drive down your crime rate. So, so that's the relationship that we look at.
You, you just mentioned it's national, I guess, national figures. What about the cities out there?
You know, our arrest rate, they stay, they stay pretty, they stay pretty, they're, they're about, at about the same rate. And we started looking at this, um, about, um, eight, six years ago, when we were looking at the lockup, uh, adding the wackad pad to oversee our lockup. And part of our analysis was looking at, um, our, our arrest rates during those periods of time. And what we were seeing is that our arrest rates stayed about the same. And even now, they're, they're, they're staying about the same. Um, so, so we haven't seen a substantial increase in our, in our arrest rates during that period of time.
Is, is any, any, everything committed, everything, uh, noted as, as, as a crime?
Yes.
There's some arrests that are not crimes?
Well, we have some, we have some incidents where we take a person into protective custody and that's not necessarily, that's, that's not considered a crime. Uh, for instance, if there's a person who has some mental issues and we have to take that person in, um, in, as a, um, in, you know, for a, uh, evaluation, some psychiatric evaluation, that would not be considered a crime. But it, probably ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of the time, if we take a person into custody, it's because they have committed a crime.
Thank you, uh.
Yeah, is the crime data based on our population or our, our daytime population? Daytime or daytime? You know, when they do an assessment of crime per head or whatever, however they do their data? FBI, do they base it on it, I don't know, seventy-two thousand or do they base it on? In other words, when you get into Southfield, you talk about millions of people going through the city on the expressways and, and major roads. And more so than other communities. And, and, uh, I just wanna, they base that crime estimate on, let's say, a hundred and forty thousand that are working here or they're based on seventy-two thousand out here at night?
It's a great, great issue that you brought up because first, no, they don't do it per capita. It's a, they, it's a straight, um, raw number of the amount of crimes that it, that a jurisdiction has. But in our last staff meeting, we discussed compiling our statistics based on daytime, you know, so we're almost having two, two, um, two tracts of, of information that we're putting out there. Uh, because not a lot of communities have the daytime population that we have. And so, you're absolutely right. If you look at our statistics, if you look at it per capita during the day, the daytime, when we have, I don't know, was it a hundred fifty or two hundred thousand people, whatever it is, come through here, um, our crime rate is actually much, much lower than even I've been publicly, uh, giving out. So, but yes, that's, that's absolutely, so we're in the process right now to just, of doing that.
Just like our stolen cars, when you're talking about seventy-two thousand people experiencing a stolen car and a hundred and forty thousand during the daytime experiencing stolen cars, that data puts us so that we're flagged and we pay more money in our insurance than, I think it's up to Sixteen Mile Road now, where they, uh, they flag you now and see more, almost three hundred dollars more. Or you, per car. Yeah, this just went up again, yeah. Cars are more expensive, that's why.
The action we're requesting, uh, is to, will, is for council to recognize a hundred and thirteen thousand we received from the state. And when that request originally came in, I was somewhat struggling, uh, do we should probably go into IT or police department? But a couple of conversations with our police chief and a conversation with the, uh, representatives of the business community, part of our sales pitch was, you know, save a lot of the police department. And that kinda pushed me off center that, well, maybe the hundred and thirteen thousand should go into the police department to ensure that our officers have the best equipment for our residents as well as our business community. Now, the chief talked about the analytical. I mean, what our guys do, and our men and women do, uh, with modern social, social media, our task force, these collaborative efforts, they're all the best practices and, you know, the modern, the state of the art. What Shelley Freeman can say to someone, look, you know, we've got the gang task force, we've got the human traffic, the white collar, the electronic, I mean, for a lot of our corporations, their, the criminal activity they see is this almost international, global, uh, the corporate espionage type things. And the collaborative effort working with the, I know we've got the feds, the FBI, the, uh, Secret Service, you know, when I get into all these, it's amazing. But that's part of our story and part of what we're selling as, as a product. Obviously, a safe and secure community, but that messaging also needs to include a modern, state-of-the-art police department. And I really think we've got one of the finest in the state, I mean, because of the resource allocation you've been able to make. So, the recommendation is for a hundred and thirteen thousand to come back to the department and to be reinvested into the department.
I think I've got one question related to traffic. Because I really think it's still important just having that police department. Um, where are the high-traffic violations occurring? Are they in different pockets or how do you gauge that?
Major intersections is, uh, usually what we're seeing. Twelve in Telegraph every year is, uh, is huge. Ten in Southfield, um, is huge. Uh, now with the construction in this area here, this ten in Evergreen, we're seeing a, a lot of, uh, traffic complaints in that area as well. Uh, but, but we, we're committed though, even though we're getting the, the, traditionally those complaints in those areas, getting into the neighborhoods and, and doing traffic enforcement in those areas as well. So, they get a lot of complaints from residents about speeding cars going out on the street and, and suspicious vehicles. So, just, uh, just having, having those cars in the neighborhoods as well, not only make the streets, uh, uh, safer. So just having those cars in the neighborhoods as well, not only make the streets safer from a traffic perspective, but also from a crime-related perspective, it, you know, while seeing that presence.
Yeah, I guess personally I'd like to see some more cars right at that ten-mile Evergreen Northwestern triangle. Because I see violators every day and I wish I had one right to see.
But I will say, Council President, that we have a standing detail in that area. Uh, so every single day, uh, our traffic officers are out there, they hit that area. Um, you know, it's not the entire day. Um, they try to mix it up a little bit because there's other, um, you know, pressures that we're having in the city. But every single day we're hitting that area. But I hear you, we just, uh, that's something we'd have to commit maybe a little bit more resources to.
And even, um, just from my side of town, on my street, I don't know why people are now just totally ignoring me. And they are driving very, very fast on traffic trails. So if you turn down a street, you're just going to pull that traffic down.
Yeah, Chief, um, we're talking about to go over, um, speed limit?
Yes.
The service drive on Ringway, if you go off in another mile.
Okay.
People are, this has been going on forever. I mean, it's, you meet a couple of cars, thousands of cars because they're all achieving. Where do they go in Southfield? If it says forty-five, they're going fifty-five. If it's twenty-five, they're going thirty-five.
Where are the crossroads, the crossroads there?
Well, I'm most frequently between Greenfield and this area, um, but I drive that service drive a lot. It's not just in Southfield, but it's more, I'm here more than anywhere else, so it's quite common.
It's not horsepower?
Well, it's, I mean, they just start and, and they go through stop signs. They go through stop signs like crazy. So, you know, it wouldn't hurt to have some presence there and I don't see any cars. And I'm, it's any time of the night or day, any time of the day.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll entertain the motion at this time.
Uh, I'll move the rule ten, right?
Rule ten, yes.
I'll move the rule ten, I'll support.
We have a motion by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Moss, for a rule ten. Always favor.
Aye. All right, thank you. We need to, I'll move the, um, uh, transfer, um, uh, to the, uh, the Clements, um, system reimbursement from the two thousand fourteen, um, expenditure account to the two thousand fifteen, for the police department. Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Moss, on the favor.
Aye.
This is outside. Um, motion carries, Mr. Fracassi.
Chief, is there anything you'd like to expand on? We went all the way around the court and did discuss it at all. Is there anything you wanted to add? We have nothing ready to discuss.
Can I make a comment? Because the police, we are working within the LDFA smart zone on camera presence and writing that into the TID plan as a piece of infrastructure where the police department would have greater camera presence. Although the chief has one of his officers working on that. And as we rewrite that, rewrite, as we restate, uh, and adopt a new TID plan, which is on our work plan for, uh, early two thousand and fifteen, that level of infrastructure will be in there. I think the police chief's excited about it. It gives us a greater sets of presence using electronics. And what we see in major cities, Chicago, Atlanta, New York, it'll be our pilot area. They have a different set of eyes on the community.
Just one thing here stands out, and I'll be brief. It's the first item in there is that the police cadets going to the police academy. And, um, that's critical for us. Um, you know, Council authorized me to hire eight officers this fiscal year. And, um, this allows me to do just that. So I'll get those six in and then there's a couple of other cadets who have already been through the police academy. So don't have to send them. So this will allow me to hire those eight officers that Council authorized me to do.
Could you say, in your presentation, you said we could all look up the crime statistics?
Yes, yes, how do we, SBI dot?
SBI dot?
Yes, and just kind of flow through it until you get to the local statistics, local violent crime statistics. And it has every municipality in Michigan. And you can go back, I think, as far as two thousand and six.
Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, thank you.
I'll move that we go into closed session. Support.
We have a motion by, uh, Moss, supported by-
I'll move a rule ten.
I'll move a rule ten. Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Moss, supported by Mr. Fracassi, for a rule ten, on the favor.
Aye.
We need a vote on the vote to go into closed session.
Why do we have to do a rule ten to go into closed session?
Well, because you technically don't ask. That's a formal motion that's being made to go into closed session. So it's safer not to do a vote on it. Because you do not do motions at your study session. That's your?
Oh, yeah.
Well-
Okay, so we have a motion for a rule ten, that's dead, passed.
I'll move, we're going to closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. Moss, supported by Mr. Frazier, to go into closed session.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Frazier, and, yes, Mr. Fracassi.
Yes.
Mr. Seiver.
Yeah.
Mr. Moss.
Yeah.
Ms. Seymour. Mr. Lance. Ms. Jordan.
Yes.
Yes, I'm in the favor.